I will call the meeting of the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here.
Jelka?
Here.
We will now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to receive the agenda that has proposed or amended. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Item number two, public comments. Do we have anyone in the audience that wishes to provide public comment? Do you have anybody online or on the phone who wishes to provide public comment? Claims and payments, Mr. Perry.
Yes, this week's expenditures total $446,677.01. The larger department's secondary roads, $145,272. We had a work comp premium payment in there for $81,665. Social services total $46,629. And finally, Sheriff's Department, $69,603. Everything looks good.
Okay, we have a resolution that we approve the expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and direct that they issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second? Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Item number four, project updates from department heads, elected officials. Kathy?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Good morning. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. It's not every day that we go to work and make a real difference in another person's life. This morning, I wanted to recognize Seth Smith. Seth is one of our equipment operators, and he's been with us about three and a half years. And I wanted to thank and recognize Seth for assisting with an accident last week. Yep, last Thursday morning. There was a serious, a severe accident on Cedar Wapsie Road and Raymond Road. And Seth was there almost immediately. He was driving westbound on Cedar Wapsie Road and was almost there immediately and was able to go and assist at the burning vehicle, was able to help pull the driver out of the burning car. And unfortunately, one of the individuals did not survive. But I really wanted to commend Seth for his very efficient, very smart actions, heroic actions on that last Thursday. He's really a model employee for doing that. I really want to commend him for that. And I wanted to hear some, to introduce him to you as well.
Seth, that's impressive. Congratulations. And those incidents leave an impact upon us emotionally. But God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going above and beyond. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you. I also wanted to mention that Mr. Tryon and I were talking about the, our discussions last week about the disposal of, or some property disposal on Dale Street in Hudson. Would you like to have further discussions on that? Or should we move forward and put it on the agenda?
Put it on the agenda.
And did I see we had something we have to follow, publish it or something?
Yeah, we're going to have to publish it and have a hearing on it.
We'll start that process.
I think I'd recommend before we do that, we get a legal description and get a proposed price that seems like it'll be palatable. Because if the other, if the buyer isn't in the mood to invest the money in getting a good legal description, which will probably require a survey, then I think the issue's going to be moot.
And the county's not going to incur any cost, right, Kathy?
Correct. That's what Mr. Holmes was certainly in agreement with that. And that's what you're all suggesting as well, proposing as well.
I think follow policy.
The one, the one cost I could see the county incurring perhaps, unless we had, unless we subtract this from the transaction or add this to the cost of the transaction, would be the cost of publication. So we'd want to get that and add it to the purchase price if indeed we're going to make this a net zero for the county.
Yeah. Sounds good.
And Kathy, are you researching UTV ordinances at all?
So I have. I'm sorry, that just got put back on the back burner.
Sure.
Yes, we had, there were several departments that we, I feel like we should get together and talk about here, how we're going to move forward with investigating a proposed ordinance. Or do you want to have a work session on that to find out?
Have you met with the sheriff?
We've had discussions about it numerous times over the years. We also probably need to get the treasurer involved and Mike, of course, just to find out if...
Has there been a heldup the years past? I know we've talked about it quite a few times. Has there been one certain area that didn't agree with having it or what? I was thinking the sheriff was not aboard the last time, but I'm not going to speak for him.
No, in the past, I, it's been myself that's probably been unsupportive of it.
Because they're growing in popularity, and I just imagine what it could do for the economy of Door, Washburn, Dunkerton, our smaller communities.
Also, did you get some information on some of our surrounding counties? Bremer, Buchanan?
Yeah.
Grundy?
Absolutely.
Butler, see what they've done?
So were you thinking or asking, I guess, after you get that information together, then you'd present it to the board for further discussion? Or how are you proposing to go about it? So we, there are a number of different avenues. We, I can present you with information about what the surrounding counties do. We could have meetings amongst the department heads, the departments, talk about how to move forward, assuming that you're on board with us wanting to adopt an ordinance?
I am.
I would take a look into, at Lynn County too, just because I know they spend a long time looking at the traffic count on roads and kind of coming up with what the most appropriate roads they felt would be, so that they might have a formula worth taking a look at.
I wouldn't say I'd support it yet, but I'd certainly be open to looking at the information you provide and seeing if all the parties, I guess, agree.
Yeah, my big is, it's not a concern, but if we're going to create an ordinance, if there's any enforcement, the question is, can we enforce it? If we can't, then there's no reason to create an ordinance, just to say we do have one. So I think there's a little bit of work to be done, but I think I've got an open mind either way. But I think we need more information from the, you said the treasurer, I mean, I'm curious why the treasurer...
Well, for example, if there's licensing fees, licenses required, all those types of things with, some counties have, require license plate. There's, there's a lot of different, 50 counties probably have now adopted some type of ordinance that go above with the Code of Iowa laws.
So currently, they don't have plates on them now?
No, I know Waterloo actually has an ordinance that regulates them. And actually, I introduced it, but it's for working UTVs. I didn't want grandpa taking a UTV to church, because Waterloo's just not appropriate for it. But for businesses that plow snow or mow grass, rely upon these. And the one consideration there was, was having these registered in the city, charging a fee and having a plate or whatever. And it was felt that just the DNR registration was enough. The city didn't want to get in the fee business and regulation aspect of it for plates.
I know my town, you can drive them on the streets. And the criteria, what they told me was have to be licensed, they got to have turn signals and brake lights and headlights.
Mine fits it.
And that's what qualifies them to be on the street. And they are in the streets, driving to the store, church.
So, yeah, I think it sounds like there's interest amongst the board to explore it further. I mean, it's an evolving industry. I think it might be beneficial. There's a safety concern.
Sure there is.
But it's an activity I engage in outside the state and...
I think safety's always been your concern. Right, that was mine.
The blind intersections with the corn and stuff, it's dangerous.
Well, thank you. I'll get with the other department head. Thank you.
Rory?
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent.
Morning.
Just wanted to share with you that I did receive the green light for energizing the Pinecrest facility solar field. So I will be working this afternoon on getting that transfer over. I'll give you a further update once we establish communications with the solar field, similar to what was sent out to you earlier as far as the production rates and so forth. So once I have that established, I will most definitely get that over to you. But hopefully, by the end of the day, that particular farm will be up and running. So I think...
Very good.
Thanks.
Exciting.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to provide the Board an update. I forgot to say my name. Dr. Jennifer Seaborn, your Black Hawk County Health Director. Just an update, since it's the beginning of the fiscal year of our positions, we've made some good progress. Can you go to the second page? Yeah. We've made some pretty good progress. It takes some time because just the nature of our work, it's very technical. But because the Health Department has built a close relationship with University of Iowa, they're also helping us through some of their graduates with the School of Public Health. Some of these are very exciting also for me because they're also internal, they're positions that internal staff have been able to move into. And so that's, that's really been exciting. That's one of the things, areas in our department, we're always trying to look at if there are staff that really fit, you know, positions that they, you know, they're interested and can be promoted. And we highly, you know, encourage staff to apply for those positions. So it's exciting. Today, I'm also here to introduce our new Deputy Director, Mr. Hakuno Tura. Hakuno came to us as a Community Health Program Manager. He has extensive experience, over 15 years of experience in public health, has worked with the World Health Organization, just different organizations throughout the world doing public health. And so it's just, it's, we are very blessed and fortunate to have him here in Black Hawk County. He did a tremendous job with the program that he oversees. And so it's exciting to see him in this new role. He will soon be Dr. Hakuno Tura, so it's also exciting for that. Do you want to say anything?
Thank you. Good morning, Board.
Morning.
I know some of you guys, and as I was, I've been around here for some time now. I came to Cedar Falls and Waterloo area back in 2007, when I was in international setting, working with the international large charity. And my largest donor, some of the largest donors are from this area and churches from this area. So that is how I started coming to, coming to this area. And then finally, I loved the place and then I decided to make this my home. So I came to University of Northern Iowa and then I went to University of Iowa for my PhD. Then I decided to stay here, really. This is the place to, it feels a community, it feels home. So I am really, really happy to be part of this exciting community. So I'm excited to work closely with anyone in the community, including the Board and the team. It is also great to be part of the amazing team out of Black Hawk County Health Department. So that's what I'm experiencing the last year and a half now. So thank you. Thank you for the...
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So we've been, we've been moving along with our positions. And so I'm hoping that by September, we should be, we should be filled with our positions that are vacant. Some of these are really, you know, for example, with Hakuno transitioning into the Deputy Director role, the Community Program Manager is vacant. The epidemiologist's position, I do believe in the next couple of weeks, we should be filling that. It just takes us some time, but we, we're pulling through. Operationally, the programs are doing very well. And we're still out providing COVID update towards the end of the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department head or elected official that would like to provide an update?
Sheriff, I did just want to let, let the Board know that the conversations with other department heads regarding the American Rescue Plan dollars are going well. We still have a few departments that we need to meet and get their, I'll say, requests kind of documented and have, have a conversation on those. The resounding theme here is that it's going to be hard to get a dollar amount for these projects, especially on such a short timeframe. So when, when we do start kind of discussing these projects here mid to late July, just kind of keep in mind that these, these are going to be very, very preliminary estimates on, on dollars. So but other than that, no conversations are going really well and, and we're moving forward.
Well, we have till, until fall of '23, 2023?
Oh, we have until December of 2024.
24.
So when were you thinking as far as presenting or having some of those?
Well, so last week, last week you had asked that and I had said, I would said I would have something to you mid to late July. I can present something to you mid to late July, but again, those, those dollar estimates are going to be pretty, pretty rough. So if you wanted to start actual conversations a little bit later, maybe August or mid-August, we could do that. But again, I'm more than happy to have conversations with you early on as far as, as far as projects go, just to get the Board's input, so.
That'd be great, I think, even just to get the information to us, so we can take a look and see what our thoughts are.
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks.
All right, any other department heads, elected officials, anybody online or on Zoom, on the phone? Item number five, approval of the minutes from June 29th, 2021. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, say no. Consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Item number eight A, a resolution that the IRS Form 720 to remit payment of $1,729.74 for the county's Patient Centered Outcomes Research Institute, PCORI. E, for the 2019, 2020 plan year as required by the Affordable Care Act, be approved and direct the Chair to sign.
So moved.
Second?
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Item eight B is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 a.m. on Tuesday, July 20th, 2021, in Boardroom 201 of Black Hawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed ordinance number 77-254 from a request submitted by Justin Schmitz at east of 5211 West Burnin' Road, three zones, 7.23 acres from A agricultural to AR agricultural residential district to build three new single-family homes. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Item eight C is a resolution that the taxes due and payable of the submitted persons as indicated, including special assessments and rates or charges, including interest fees and costs, in accordance with the provisions of subsection 427.9 of the Code of Iowa, be suspended and that future property taxes on property owned by the persons will be suspended for such time as the persons remain the owner of the parcels. And during the period, the persons receives assistance as described in subsection 427.9 of the Iowa Code.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Item eight D is a resolution that the engagement letter between Black Hawk County and Clifton Larson Allen LLP, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, for auditing services for the fiscal year ending June 20th, or I'm sorry, June 30th, 2021, in the amount of $73,135, an increase of $2,835, be approved and direct the Chair to sign for same as recommended by James Perry, Finance Director. Mr. Perry?
Not much to say here, other than it's kind of crazy that we're in audit season already. Clifton Larson Allen is a fantastic company. We've worked with them for three years. This is the engagement letter to start their auditing services, so.
Is this, is this the third year of the first or the...
Yes, sir. Yes.
And then we traditionally go another three before we bid it?
Correct.
Okay.
So...
And the contract calls for an increase in each year?
Correct.
Okay.
What's the percentage of that increase? I mean...
4%.
4%. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Item eight E is a resolution that the engagement letter leases between Black Hawk County and Clifton Larson Allen LLP, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, for lease auditing services in the amount not to exceed $16,285. Be approved and direct the Chair to sign for the same as recommended by James Perry, Finance Director.
So moved.
Second? Any comments or questions?
No increase on this one, James?
No, so this is, this is actually new. So the Governmental Accounting Standards Board actually issued a new rule, GASB 87, which basically tells you that you need to start accounting for the leases and include them in on your financial reporting. So this is, this is going to be new. Again, this is going to be a high dollar for year one, just because there's going to be an implementation stage. And then the maintenance every year to get them into the, the financials are going to be significantly less. I did a not to exceed, because there are going to be leases that are not going to be, or that do not have to be included in the financials. And so there's going to be, the quote that we got for CLA, or from CLA, is the $16,285. But again, we're going to, we're going to be able to knock that down by, by kind of knocking out those leases that don't need to be accounted for, so.
If it ain't too much work, could you give us a breakdown of what leases we got are separated?
Yep, yeah, yep. And that's, and that's going to be, that's going to be part of the process as well, and I can definitely afford that on you.
Do you know approximately how many leases we have?
Well, we have 20 leases, but again, there's, there's not going to be, so, so, for example, the, the range is a lease for a dollar for 99 years. That is a lease that we have, but again, that's not going to be a true accounting lease. The, the ones that we have for the Board for the lot leases, that to me is going to be something that is going to be, that we're going to have to check in to see if it's, it's actually accounted for, because it's not, realistically, it is a low dollar amount for, for what they are, especially, especially some that bidded the, you know, the $5 or the $7, that kind of thing. So we have about 20, but I, I'm estimating about 12 to 13 is going to be on our financial report.
And this is going to be a yearly cost from year on out?
Yes.
And this, this wasn't part of the bid of the audit? Will it be part of the bid in the future?
Yes.
So it'll all be one package?
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Item eight F, discussion, discussion possible Board action in regard to security guard services at the Pinecrest facility. Rory?
Morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. Sorry. So I wanted to go over the security services currently that we have over at the Pinecrest facility. First of all, I wanted to go over the addendum for those services. This addendum was signed June 28th, 2020, and it's attached to the original contract for security services here at the courthouse. That original contract was signed November 26th, 2019, and it goes through December 31st, Along with that addendum, I wanted to kind of walk through the duties at that time that we had our intent for this security officer over at Pinecrest. Security rounds on all levels of the building. We are currently doing that. We have barcodes on each level. The officer does go up to those levels and scans and looks for, you know, things that might be out of order. Respond to incidents, keep staff safe, parking lot checks, staff escorts when requested, look for safety or security concerns, show security presence while friendly customer service, and other duties as assigned. The other duties as assigned really came into play with COVID. And as you know, the security card, guard, we've taken up shop there in the, in the lobby. Basically, originally making sure that people had their mask on. We had given this person a script if somebody was coming in for either the Health Department or the DHS. Essentially, it's providing those people with phone numbers to reach out to those departments. As you know, we were recently notified by DHS that they are opening back up July 1st, which also means they're going to open up their receptionist window. One of the concerns that I have with the existing setup that we currently have over there is, for one, it's, it's, it's going to potentially clutter the lobby as clients come into that building. But secondly, my concern is just with the items that are out. We have had situations over at Pinecrest where things have gotten a little out of hand and somebody might grab an item. It was brought to my attention that there's some flower pots in the windowsill. So what I'd like to do is just kind of clean that area up. And if we want to continue with these services, I would essentially recommend that we remove the table, remove the plexiglass that's in the lobby, place something maybe next to the elevators for the guard to station themselves and really get back to the original intent of this RFP. Now, I know there's been a lot of discussion back and forth with whether or not this particular guard is needed at Pinecrest, so I just wanted to bring this to the Board today to discuss any questions that you might have for me with regards to this guard.
What's the cost per week for the county?
Um, I believe it's a little over $700. We've spent approximately $33,000 so far since this addendum was signed.
And the window's going to open? It is open now.
It is open now, yes.
It is open now. And the receptionists, I think they got two or three ladies?
Usually, there's, there's two. There, there might be on occasion three, but I'm pretty sure there's at least two there.
You get the flower pots removed?
I haven't yet. That was on my agenda for today.
So everything will be done, that you're suggesting would be done immediately?
I would sit down with the guard and explain this to them and also reach out to permar of the changes if the Board agrees.
If we were to eliminate this position, what's the notice you'd like to get? 30 days, 60 days?
In the, in the contract for the original contract, it's a 60-day termination. When I looked at the addendum, essentially, this addendum attaches onto that contract. So I would assume, and I can work with legal, but I would assume if the Board wishes to eliminate these services, we would have to follow the language in the original contract.
I would think that'd be proper.
I guess I'd like to see us go back to the original intent with the guard and having them, when they're not doing the scans to the building. I'd be curious how many times per day the scans to the building are expected to be done and have them stationed by the elevator when they're not doing those.
Okay.
And I assume the staff would be standing and walking the building most... And I assume the staff would be standing and walking the building, those types of things, not sitting in a chair or?
I would provide, what I envisioned is providing a stool by the elevator, but primarily the intent, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the original intent was to have a person there, have a cell phone available. If there's a department that needs assistance, they could reach out to this guard and this guard could come up and assist, all while kind of moving about the building. Just making sure, just like we do here, making sure that there's nothing suspicious, no unattended packages, bags, what have you. That's the primary goal, is just to keep that building safe.
Are the, aren't the doors on the various floors locked?
The wing doors are locked.
So it'd be basically getting off the elevator and looking this way and that way?
Essentially, yeah. And we, and, and you're right, you bring up a good point. Those changes were made after, they've always been, well, they, I don't want to say always, but they've been for some time in the works, but those actual changes were made after this guard was put in place.
And I think our last incident we had out there, I believe the personnel in the window there in the first floor is the one that called?
I believe you're right, yes.
Security, as far as Sheriff's Office in the Waterloo Police?
Yeah, I believe it was actually an employee in the VA Department in their old existing area. And then that, that person came back out into the lobby and got into the lobby and created some havoc before the Sheriff's Department arrived.
I, I think it served its purpose for the COVID part and so forth because the state was shut down down there, but I just, I'm struggling with it if it justifies $700 a week of county taxpayers' money for that position, especially when we lock the doors on all the floors now. It's, and VA, and VA's out of there now, and so you have no security over there. You got an open door, so I don't know.
Just to kind of back up with regards to locking the wing doors, that's first through fourth. Now, fifth door, fifth floor, just the way that that floor is arranged, that particular floor does not have wing doors. So somebody could essentially during normal business hours get up into the fifth floor, but they have a receptionist right there at the elevators, too.
So why are the doors locked on the other floors now that we're open for business?
The wing doors are always locked, and so what we've done is?
They've never been locked? They were never locked before?
No, we, that was one of our security upgrades that we did for that facility. So all employees have a badge now. So on first through fourth floor, in order to get back into their office areas, they have to use their badge to come in and out of those wind doors. Along with that, we also put a fob on, I call it the tunnel door, it goes out to the, the east parking lot, and then we also have a fob on the, the man door that goes down to the basement, along with the fob in the elevator. So you, you only select individuals have access to the basement on their fobs. So we've done, we've done quite a few upgrades with regards to security out there when it comes to the door fob system. VA also has a, a door fob on their main door along with a buzzer. So their door, it's my understanding, remains locked all day and the receptionist actually buzzes people in.
Gosh, you can see it's right on.
Yeah, she's right there, right.
I assume, Rory, like I said, this next month should be probably very busy out there, busier than it's been, and we'd see the traffic increase.
Yeah.
And I would assume you'd be monitoring it really close so that if it doesn't look
like it's working as planned, you can get back to us?
I can do that.
After a month or whatever and see how it works?
Does individual go out in the parking lot at all?
We, within about the last, I'm going to say, month or so, we have supplied them with tickets so they can go out, they have the ordinance available to them, they know what they're looking for, they have a list of license plates that essentially belong to employees. The way that facility works is the lower east lot is reserved for employees and the upper lot is reserved for clients.
Has there been any tickets written?
Only a few, to my knowledge, yes.
So what we should do is the same thing we do out here. If there's an employee parked up on the top, they should get a ticket?
Absolutely. That's, and that's what the ordinance says, that they have 15 minutes to unload, say if they have equipment or something, they could pull up to the door, unload, and then they're supposed to go down to the lower lot and park.
Are they able to pull up to the back doors and unload with a key fob?
No, that door is actually locked out. We do have a vendor pass, it's called, so for an example, if the Health Department has a delivery, they can assign that vendor pass to, to that person. They would have to come in through the front door, get the pass, go around to the back and make their delivery.
When, we call that position, I mean, the individuals or individuals, there's been a couple out there, done a great job, but I think their reason is different now. And I don't know what, you, you call it security, but I'm not sure what security you're talking about. It's no different than having that window open now and having them, they've done for the last 40 years.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I struggle when you say security because does the individual carry any kind of security weapons or deterrents?
No, no. And, you know, it's, it's in their name and that's, I think, we've, we've gotten in the habit over the years, even our security officers down here don't necessarily have any, any, anything to protect themselves.
At least we got a machine that they monitor and stuff out there. We're going to pay $700 a week for somebody to sit on the stool by the elevator? I don't know about that.
Yeah.
That's why I thought I, we could take a look at it for a month and see if there's other things.
I'd be willing to table this for a month and put it back on the agenda a month from today.
Yes.
And, but I, I think we need to take a good look at it.
Yeah, we can certainly monitor that, keep a heavy eye on it.
But I would get rid of the, the pots and stuff before they start flying.
That was my main objective for today was?
Eat the flowers, get rid of the pots. Plant them out front or something.
It does look very nice over there.
Well, I'm sure it does.
It looks nice.
Yeah.
Do we have, we have cameras in that area, too, don't we?
We have a, we have one camera that shows the front entrance, the lobby.
In the lobby itself?
Mm-hmm.
Is that sufficient?
Uh, we actually have a new video system in the works for that building and what I'd like to see is, is something with a wider angle because right now, this, this camera point, you can see the receptionist desk and you can see the main door. I'd like to get a better, a wider view of that lobby.
I think that's a good idea.
Would have been very helpful when we had our last incident.
Tony, we get out there pretty quick anyway, don't we, whether it be the sheriff of Waterloo?
Yeah.
Are they still, there used to be a sheriff deputy that was supposed to be stopping in every so often. Are they still doing that?
I can't tell you for sure. I know that was discussed when we put this in place, that if they had the available resources that they'd swing in, I can't tell you for sure if that's been happening.
We still do, multiple times a day, between our civil and our patrol.
And since DHS is 50% of the building or plus, do they contribute to the cost for that position?
They do. They, they cover their, we put it under expenses for that facility, so that's, that's a good point. It's like 52.4% of the cost for this DHS desk.
You know, with Newell Street, too, Tony, I see a lot of our sheriff cars out in that area, you know, when they go, they kind of use that. I don't know if that's Idaho or what, but, so I, you see a lot of sheriffs out in that area a lot.
We've always had great response when there's issues.
Yeah.
Response time, so.
Let's table it for a month then.
Okay.
Sounds good.
See you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight G is discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19.
All right. Good morning again.
Good morning.
So since the last we've spoken, we've had overall, our 18 and older, about 59% have been vaccinated as of today. We still continue to push for vaccination. I do believe that we need to do our very best to get up to the 70% threshold, so continue to encourage, as I have said, we're in communication, our 18 to 24-year-olds to get vaccinated. The Delta variant is here in Blackhawk County, so that's, again, another reason why we need to do our very best to get vaccinated. On June 25th, the test Iowa was closed, and so there, the state informed us they're replacing it with at-home test kits, and we'll have more information and I'll share that with the, the board when we get more details in regards to that. Also, on June 24th, the Iowa Department of Public Health announced that as of July 1, they will not, no longer be conducting case investigation or contact tracing for all cases of COVID-19, and instead will be focusing on outbreaks in vulnerable population. So IDPH has given local health departments the option to continue with their investigations, and I've determined that Blackhawk County will continue. I'd like to see where we're at, especially now with the Delta variant and, you know, going into the much cooler months. So right now, we're, we're still doing our case investigations here locally. Also, they'll be making some just updates at the state level for their coronavirus data, and so we'll, we'll shift a little bit. We won't be providing weekend updates. You know, it's been a lot for staff to be doing this Monday through Sunday, and so I made a decision that we can do those updates Monday through Friday and give staff a break during the weekend. But again, just please encourage people to continue to be vaccinated. We're, we're just still continue to stay alert until we know more, especially in regards to the Delta variant. Any questions?
So with this, this deal you've put in place for someone to win money or win, how is that, is that doing any good? It's not, is it?
It's not, it's not doing as much as we'd like. You know, to be honest, we, we see, we had funding from a foundation and we just want to go above and beyond trying to get people to be vaccinated. And so it, like I mentioned, if you look at how this data is doing, it's really counties such as Lynn Polk and Johnson that are pushing those numbers. And so we're, we're slowly getting there, but I think for, my biggest concern is that it's too slow to, it, it's too slow as we get into the winter months, and so, yeah.
With that, the day at the ballpark, I stood there and watched and like three shots, you guys got help?
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're, I mean, with our local healthcare partners, we're everywhere, you know, you can get your vaccine everywhere, so that, there's a lot of misinformation out there and so we're, we're having to deal with, with that, too.
With, with the 18 to 24-year-old category being so difficult, I assume there's ongoing planning with, with UNI and Hawkeye and Allen College of Nursing as a entry, since there's a large young population that only lives here part of the year.
Yeah.
So they're probably not even necessarily accounted for in these numbers. And so that is potentially another way that can, of, of people that may potentially be unvaccinated can send our overall vaccination rate lower and just?
Yeah.
I assume you're having those conversations throughout the summer with UNI?
Yes, yes. And, and just, you know, being prepared when school reopens till we're doing that. And so we're, we're going to make sure to make vaccinations available to that age group. So it's actually the incentive was to kind of get that group going, but it's been, it's been hard.
Can you check with the ballpark again? They got a bunch of new ballplayers in that, they'd like to get it to 85%.
Yeah.
So they're, they're, they'll be gone today and tomorrow, but they'll be back Thursday.
Okay, absolutely, absolutely. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine, any reports or information from the board? Okay, item number 10, closed session. This is a resolution to proceed into closed session for evaluation of the professional competency of an employee whose performance is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable damage, injury to that individual's reputation and that individual has requested a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code subsection 21.5, paragraph 1i.
So moved.
Okay.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. We are out of closed session. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. We are adjourned.
Thank you.